Testing subway shape. It's following, it's following by that impression of the subway. Can you be sure?
I hate to be doing, you don't have to get up y'all today too.
Are you a tuber?
Look, so I'm out of the woods. I'm two more.
It gets better.
It is what it is.
Always working. Well, he beat the, uh, the clackkerdles out here. So this is all playing when he arrives. So he got, he got. Well, he had to talk to, we had a couple of, uh, consultants that are here with us.
Thank you. What do I do with this? Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clerk, if you please call a roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Van Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Protam and District Five Alderwoman, Dr. Estella Edward Shabazz.
Present.
Chairman and District Four Alderman, Nick Palumbo.
Present.
Vice Chair and District Three Alderwoman, Linda Wilder-Bryan.
Ready, let's go.
Post One Alderwoman, Carolyn H. Bell.
Present.
Post Two Alderwoman, Alicia Miller Blakely will be absent. Her husband was hospitalized earlier this week. District One Alderwoman, Bernetta B. Lanier.
Present.
District Two Alderman, Dietrich Leggett.
Here.
And District Six Alderman, Curtis Purtee.
Present.
Mayor Johnson, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All rise. I call this meeting of the Savannah City Council to order. Today is July the 10th, 2025. The time is 2:00 PM. We want to thank everyone for joining us, both within our temporary chambers and across our various social media platforms, to include our award-winning SGTV. Savannah will be a safe, environmentally healthy, and economically thriving community for all, and for us, all means all. Today's invocator is Dr. Estella Edward Shabazz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Reverend Janice Swan Butts is a sought-after pastor. She is a licensed and ordained pastor. Reverend Janice Swan Butts is the pastor-elect of First Nazareth Missionary Baptist Church, located on the corner of West 44th Street and Hopkins Street. Pastor-elect Swan Butts is a trained pastor, graduating from Covenant Theological Seminary, where she received her Bachelor of Ministry and Master of Ministry degrees in Pastorial Studies. She has previously served as the Assistant Pastor at Thankful Missionary Baptist Church for over 15 years. Pastor-elect Swan Butts is the owner and CEO of Hug Me and Love Me Childcare Learning Center Incorporated, where they believe Jesus plus education equals success. Pastor-elect Butts is married to Mr. Albert Butts. They have four children, seven grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. On the third Sunday in this month of July, July 20th, 2025, at 3:00 PM, she invite you to join her for her first pastoral installation as pastor of the First Nazareth Missionary Baptist Church. Pastor-elect Butts' installation service will be held at Thankful Missionary Baptist Church. At this time, I introduce to some and present to others the pastor-elect of First Nazareth Missionary Baptist Church, Janice Swan Butts.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Mayor Protam. Thank you very much. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, gracious God, we lift our city to you. We pray for safety, prosperity, and well-being of all its residents. We ask you to guide our city council as they make decisions that will impact our community. Grant them strength, grant them courage, grant them wisdom to lead with integrity and to serve with love. Bless our elders who continually walk in wisdom. Bless our parents, our aunts and uncles, and brothers and sisters, and friends, and neighbors, whose hands are directly on our children. Strengthen and empower our children, God. Give them wisdom and knowledge and understanding, creating them a clean heart and renew a right spirit within them, so that they will make right decisions, moral decisions, noble decisions, virtuous decisions, in the name of Jesus. Let every heart say amen.
Amen.
Let us honor our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. I certainly ask that, when and where you deem it appropriate, in your prayer time or quiet time, that you say a prayer for our friends in Texas, who are just going through unspeakable tragedy right now. Parents who can't find their babies, babies who can't find their parents, for a natural disaster that could very well happen in our area. So please keep them in your thoughts and your prayers. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. So a couple of things before we adopt the agenda, because I see a bunch of folks here, and so my spidey senses are telling me I need to make some clarifications. As it relates to the item number 13, dealing with horse-drawn carriages, and item number 14, these are under first reading, so we're glad to have you here today, but we would not be taking public comment. We did not advertise it as a public hearing, so therefore it will be a first reading where no action or comment will be taken. However, I believe it would be noticed for April 14th, Mr. Clerk?
April?
That's our next meeting? I mean, August 14th? August 14th, I'm sorry, I'm back in the past, so coming back. August the 14th. So you're welcome to stay, but I wanted to make sure that that was clear. The second thing, as I understand it, there is an item number 44, which is a petition of Gary Wiggins on behalf of the Highlands Park Commercial LLC, which last week I vetoed the council, uh, council action, and I've been informed that the petitioner has requested us to, um, to push this until our next meeting, which is also on the 14th. So, Madam, Mayor Protam, you can proceed.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for July 10th, 2025, with the additions said by our mayor.
Second motion.
And probably moved and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I would like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes for the work session and city manager's briefing held on June the 26th, 2025, at 12:00 PM, and for the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on June 26th, 2025, at 2:00 PM.
Second motion.
And probably moved and seconded that we approve the minutes for the work session and city manager's briefing held on June the 26th, 2025, at 12:00 noon, and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on June 26th at 2:00 PM. You've heard the motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Under presentations, I have one, and then I have two of personal privilege to include an announcement. Is Dr. McLean here?
Yes.
Is Dr. McLean here?
I saw her outside.
Yeah, she was outside.
I think there's a line outside, too.
Okay. Can someone? She's here?
She is here.
Could you? I know y'all have Dr. McLean outside.
Her and her staff is outside.
Doc, I know they don't have you outside, doc.
Mama Mojita.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Come over here with me.
Come on, Mr. Dawu. Mr. Dawu, I'm right here. Mr. Dawu, right in front of you.
Ladies and gentlemen, everyone, before environmental justice became a word, there were people who were doing the work. And I will tell you throughout my travels around this country, Savannah has been phenomenally blessed to have a person of the name and of the status and of the work product of Dr. Mildred McLean. Dr. McLean is not only known, but she's renowned for her leadership and for her vision in the environmental justice space. In fact, she has been so engaged for years, certainly throughout my entire service and probably somewhat before, working directly with neighborhoods, having neighborhoods understand what environmental justice was, working with neighborhoods to have them understand the unique challenges of their neighborhoods, empowering them to be able to address it, informing them and educating them about how to address those evolving issues in their areas, particularly on the west side, particularly at the near port and near industry communities. Dr. McLean has put in the work, and she continues that work, in season and out of season, and I have worked with her.
All means all. Today's invoker is Dr. Estella Edward Shabazz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Reverend Janice Swan Butts is a sought-after pastor. She is a licensed and ordained pastor. Reverend Janice Swan Butts is the pastor-elect of First Nazareth Missionary Baptist Church, located on the corner of West Forty-Fourth Street and Hopkins Street. Pastor-elect Swan Butts is a trained pastor, graduating from Covenant Theological Seminary, where she received her Bachelor of Ministry and Master of Ministry degrees in Pastorial Studies. She has previously served as the Assistant Pastor at Thankful Missionary Baptist Church for over fifteen years. Pastor-elect Swan Butts is the owner and CEO of Hug Me and Love Me Childcare Learning Center, Incorporated, where they believe Jesus plus education equals success. Pastor-elect Butts is married to Mr. Albert Butts. They have four children, seven grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. On the third Sunday in this month of July, July twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, at three o'clock PM, she invite you to join her for her first pastoral installation as pastor of the First Nazareth Missionary Baptist Church. Pastor-elect Butts' installation service will be held at Thankful Missionary Baptist Church. At this time, I introduce to some and present to others the pastor-elect of First Nazareth Missionary Baptist Church, Janice Swan Butts.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you very much. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, gracious God, we lift our city to you. We pray for safety, prosperity, and well-being of all its residents. We ask you to guide our city council as they make decisions that will impact our community. Grant them strength, grant them courage, grant them wisdom to lead with integrity and to serve with love. Bless our elders who continually walk in wisdom. Bless our parents, our aunts and uncles, and brothers and sisters, and friends, and neighbors, whose hands are directly on our children. Strengthen and empower our children, God. Give them wisdom and knowledge and understanding, creating them a clean heart and renew a right spirit within them, so that they will make right decisions, moral decisions, noble decisions, virtuous decisions, in the name of Jesus. Let every heart say amen.
Amen.
Let us honor our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. I certainly ask that when and where you deem it appropriate, in your prayer time or quiet time, that you say a prayer for our friends in Texas, who are just going through unspeakable tragedy right now. Parents who can't find their babies, babies who can't find their parents, for a natural disaster that could very well happen in our area. So please keep them in your thoughts and your prayers. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. So a couple of things before we adopt the agenda, because I see a bunch of folks here, and so my spidey senses are telling me I need to make some clarifications. As it relates to the item number thirteen, dealing with horse-drawn carriages, and item number fourteen, these are under first reading. So we're glad to have you here today, but we would not be taking public comment. We did not advertise it as a public hearing, so therefore it will be a first reading where no action or comment will be taken. However, I believe it would be noticed for April fourteenth, Ms. Clerk.
April?
That's our next meeting. I mean, August fourteenth. August fourteenth, I'm sorry. Back in the past, so coming back. August the fourteenth. So you're welcome to stay, but I wanted to make sure that that was clear. The second thing, as I understand it, there is an item number forty-four, which is a petition of Gary Wiggins on behalf of the Highlands Park Commercial LLC, which last week I vetoed the council action, and I've been informed that the petitioner has requested us to push this until our next meeting, which is also on the fourteenth. So, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, you can proceed.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for July tenth, two thousand twenty-five, with the additions said by our mayor.
Second motion.
Been properly moved and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I would like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes for the work session and city manager's briefing held on June the twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, at twelve o'clock PM, and for the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, at two o'clock PM.
Second motion.
Been properly moved and seconded that we approve the minutes for the work session and city manager's briefing held on June the twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, at twelve noon, and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on June the twenty-sixth at two PM. You've heard the motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Under presentations, I have one, and then I have two of personal privilege to include an announcement. Is Dr. McLean here?
Yes.
Is Dr. McLean here?
I saw her outside.
Yeah, she was outside.
I think there's a line outside, too.
Okay. Can someone... She's here?
She is here.
Could you...
She's here.
I know y'all have Dr. McLean outside.
Her and her staff is outside.
Doc, I know they don't have you outside, Doc.
Mama Mojita.
Yes, yes.
Come over here with me.
Come on, Mr. Dow. Mr. Dow, I'm right here. Mr. Dow, right in front of you.
Yeah, come on. Yeah, come on. And the neighbors, the families here as well?
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, everyone, before environmental justice became a word, there were people who were doing the work. And I will tell you, throughout my travels around this country, Savannah has been phenomenally blessed to have a person of the name and of the status and of the work product of Dr. Mildred McLean. Dr. McLean is not only known, but she's renowned for her leadership and for her vision in the environmental justice space. In fact, she has been so engaged for years, certainly throughout my entire service and probably somewhat before, working directly with neighborhoods, having neighborhoods understand what environmental justice was, working with neighborhoods to have them understand the unique challenges of their neighborhoods, empowering them to be able to address it, informing them and educating them about how to address those evolving issues in their areas, particularly on the west side, particularly at the near port and near industry communities. Dr. McLean has put in the work, and she continues that work, in season and out of season. And I have worked with her for the mustard seeds of community investment, which is a combined initiative of Savannah State University, Georgia Tech, the Clear Hub, the Harambe House, and my office, to be able to salute twelve neighborhood associations with grants to support community-driven growth and engagement through this program. So, Mother, we are so glad to have you here, and I'm so glad they had you outside, but a whole bunch of folks here. So please come and greet us at this time.
To the Honorable Mayor, the Honorable Mayor Pro Tem, to my former student, Brother Dietrich, to all of the esteemed city council people, older people. I'm excited to stand here, and I'm gonna be very quick, because I know your agenda's very long, but through the long work between the Harambe House, Georgia Tech, and Savannah State University, we received a grant, and in that grant, we decided that we would reinvest in our neighborhood associations. So in honor of Brother Henry Moore, we're giving out these five thousand dollar mustard seed investments.
Yeah, 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 yes.
If you are anything of a Bible-участник, you know that God tells us if just but a mustard seed, if we sow just but a mustard seed, He'll come and do the rest. So we have twelve neighborhood associations that will receive this mustard seed investment. We have five of them today to receive it in person. The others are getting some of the logistics squared away. And I'll end with, in addition to the twelve five thousand dollar grants, we will also be plowing an additional seventy-five thousand dollars into the west side of Savannah to address whatever environmental issues they are having. Those applications have been reviewed, and the awards will be made in one week. I'm so proud to say that. We aim to be Savannah, the best city on earth, particularly on the southeast coast of the USA. So we have, let me put my glasses on, because I don't want to get in that... East Savannah Community Association.
Yeah, Ella Common!
Ten associations on the west side and two on the east side. Ella is my childhood junior high school comrade. I know that's a long way back to Savannah Riverside. Okay, Ms. Pamela Anderson, from Woodville Community Action Organization. And these communities we've been working with for a long time. Where's Mr. and Mrs. Law? Come on, Ogeechetan Dawes Neighborhood Association. It's Ms. Lucille Jackson here, from Hudson Hill. Sister Bernetta, we still up in there. And Ms. Edwards, bless you, bless you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And also in Hudson Hill, we got an Environmental Justice Working Group, and giving them some money as well. I don't want y'all to kick me out. One more for Liberty City.
Yes! Away!
And she's just like so excited.
Yes, we are. Thank you. Calling out a name.
Thank you, 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 my mayor. The other ones are still being negotiated. They will be given out, and when we do the seventy-five thousand, we'll let you know. Again.
Good to see you, precious.
Let's give her another round of applause.
Yes!
We thank the Harambe House for being...
Harambe.
Yes.
Harambe.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. This is a good day. Good day, good day. Mr. Law, God bless you, sir. Good to see you, good to see you. Yes, sir. Thank you for the work. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. All right, all right.
Wait a minute, Mr. Mayor, I can see this man.
Come on, Shaw.
Okay, everybody ready? One, two, three. Oh, I can't do that.
All right.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
What you doing on the way? I was really, really sick.
Good to see you.
Congratulations, Dr. McLean. We appreciate you keeping your hand to the plow.
Yes, ma'am.
We had a historic partnership, Dr. McLean, with the City of Savannah and the Harambe House, and the federal government, and that money kind of got dogged on us, but we don't give up.
That's right.
Winners don't quit, and quitters don't win.
Mr. Mayor.
So we'll continue to find ways to work together, and this is certainly a great addition to our neighborhood associations, which we know is the backbone of our community.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. McLean?
Dr. McLean.
You don't have many seats for them. I want to send a personal thank you to you, Dr. McLean, and the Harambe House. And you were there when our community on Hudson Hill, where I reside, and my family have been now, and our seventh generation, when the people in our community were suffering and did not know where to go. We partnered with the Harambe House, I think around two thousand four, was it? And you have been there earlier, and you have been there since then, and I want to thank you for that, and thank you for the seed that you are planting in the west side at this time, when our environmental issues are probably worse than ever, and you remain there. So thank you very much for that, and Harambe House.
Mr. Mayor?
Miss...
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a student of Dr. McLean, I want to tell you thank you. Did you pass? You didn't have a choice. You didn't have a choice for us. I think she's actually, she's calmer than she was when we did it, but when she was talking about the Harambe House, she was talking about that in nineteen eighty-nine at Savannah High School. So that was actually a dream of hers of revitalizing and being more sustainable in the community. But when she spoke to young men, she spoke to them with her fists in their chest, and she always told us to look a man in his eyes and mean what you say. And she said that, and she said it with the strength and conviction that we needed back then, and I'm happy to be able to tell the young men that I work with the same type of thing. And if you look over there in the corner right there, stand up, Trevor. Trevor is one of our young men from Woodville Tompkins. He is one of the first young men that's going through the firefighters program, and we definitely tell him the same thing. Speak with conviction. Look people in the eyes and mean what you say. So what you gave me, we're actually giving to that sixteen-year-old that's going through a city program that started with our fire chief. So you are definitely, we are thanking you for your dream and your vision.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. McLean, I just want to thank you so much for all of the work that you have done for so many decades here in our city. The Harambe House has been your dream, and you have grown it from under the root. And so we are so thankful that you are ours. I'm so appreciative how God has blessed you and continued to strengthen you, to stay in the fight, and you just fight like you are twenty-five years old, ma'am, and I just, we just thank you so much for that energy that God has given you. You are all over the place. She is all over this nation. She is all over this nation, fighting for our community and the communities throughout the southeast, and I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for your work and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Long live the House.
Thanks, Doc, for all that you do now and all that you've done over the years. I've been pleased to work with you over the years, and I appreciate all that you're doing.
I don't need the mic.
Yes, you do.
This is my friend. No, you're not gonna get beat up. Ashay! Just one minute. Just wanted to thank her for her work in environmental social justice for years. Mama Mojita is what we lovingly call her. She does voter registration. She does GED. She does workforce ready, and she does reentry back from incarceration. Thank you so much for being my friend and the city's friend, and thank you for that five thousand dollars.
Thank you all so much. Thank you. So I have two items. One, well, both are personal privilege, so I'll take those now. I was asked the other day what it was like working with the city manager, Jay Meldor, and I said, is that a trick question? They said, well, you are the boss of the city manager. And I said, well, kind of, sort of. That there is someone who is really the boss of the city manager. Ms. Connie Coco Meldor, would you come up and say hello to us? This is Jay's mom.
Oh, wow. Beautiful.
All right, Mom.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
So we want you to know, we love your son.
Thank you very much for that. We appreciate that.
You did a good job. Every now and then, I may have to call you.
Okay.
And he gets a little out of line, and, you know, we have to work together.
Doc, we can do that.
We can do that.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and we love your city so much. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
On behalf of our city, we just wanted to say welcome.
Oh, my goodness.
And we're so glad that you're with us, all right?
Thank you.
And so we know he'll be on his best behavior today, y'all. He won't be prolonging himself. We're gonna get him out of here, because we don't want to see nothing about LSU today, nothing at all, right? All right. And then finally, Mr. Meldor, I think it's somebody you wanted to introduce, if you want to come up here, please, sir?
Yes, I will do that. Thank you. So, Council, it's my great privilege to announce publicly today that we have a new assistant city manager for the City of Savannah, and that's Taphne Young.
Say so, Mr. City Manager.
Taphne, as you know, is not new to the city, but this is a new role, and she will be responsible for supporting and assisting our office in directing and coordinating the activities and operations of city government. Furthermore, she will play a critical leadership role in implementing and measuring our new strategic plan, Savannah GPS, at council passed two weeks ago. As you know, Taphne brings more than thirty years of dedicated public service to the Savannah community. Her journey with the city began as a neighborhood services coordinator. You hear that, Lita? Where her commitment to service and her deep understanding of community needs quickly propelled her into leadership roles. Within a year, she was promoted to community services director, where she led the city's community relations initiatives and facilitated interdepartmental coordination to respond to neighborhood priorities. Of course, in two thousand twelve, she was promoted to the city's chief community service officer, whereas she's been supporting and leading all of our community services for the better part of thirteen years. And now, Taphne will be able to bring that breadth of experience and leadership to the entire enterprise, and I'm so thankful that she's here on the team. I'm so thankful that she is willing to serve in this capacity. I think she's going to do great things for this community. So congratulations, Taphne, and welcome to the role.
Thirty-two years with the City of Savannah, and I've loved every minute. You don't have, I was ten when I started. I grade early. It has been my honor. It has been my pleasure to serve the citizens of this city. So many people look at being a public servant as being a bad thing, but they're wrong. It's a blessing from God to be able to serve the community. To me, there is no higher calling, so I want to say thank you, thank you, boss. Thank you, all the colleagues. Thank you, community, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for giving me this opportunity and for your confidence. My guiding principle will be, to whom much is given, much is required. I will work every day to live up to that scripture. Thank you.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, while they're posing, I want to say congratulations to Taphne as a young neighborhood president back in the day. I was working with Taphne around when you were on Abercorn, and you know our issues, and you've grown with our issues, and you've always come up with the right solutions, and I trust your leadership. And I think you are overqualified, but we're so glad to have you in that position, so congratulations. I look forward to continuing to working with you in that position. Thank you.
Thank you. And Taphne, for me, as you know, we started our public service journey together, but you did work the old-fashioned way. You earned it. You earned every gray hair you have, and by the time you finish this journey, you'll be just Snow White. But I appreciate you for always being stable and being consistent in good times and challenging times. You've always been there, and you've always worked through it. So I look forward to see, working with you on this level, and we certainly appreciate all that you have done. So, thank you. All right, let's go into our alcohol licenses. I only have one today. Item number five, approval of a Class C beer wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to Belinda Sayivan for PJ Ty's Restaurant at one forty-seven Abercorn Street in Alderman District Two. This is a public hearing that I now declare open. Does anyone have anything against this license? Speak now if ever hold thy peace. Going once, going twice.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we close the hearing.
Second. Been properly moved and seconded that we close this hearing, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number five, Alderman Leggett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I ask that we accept and approve the alcohol license with the Class C beer wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to PJ Ty Restaurant, one forty-seven Abercorn Street.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Let me move on for expediency and just kind of move this agenda around a little bit. Under the Airport Commission, item is number twenty-seven through thirty-nine.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion for the approval of items number twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-three through thirty-nine.
Second motion.
Been properly moved and seconded that we approve item number twenty-seven, to participate in visits to Savannah's international marketing effort in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Twenty-eight, approval of advertising campaign for Spirit Airlines with agency of record Rob Marketing, amount of one hundred fifty thousand dollars. Item number twenty-nine, approval of a five-year renewed service agreement with N-Fax in the amount of three hundred thirty thousand dollars. Item number thirty, approval of a five-year Microsoft Office three sixty-five service subscription agreement with Microsoft Corporation in the amount of two hundred forty thousand dollars. Item number thirty-one, approval to execute task work order number twelve with MEAT and Hunt for cybersecurity and AI strategic planning services in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars. Item number thirty-three, approval to execute a contract with EE Reconstruction East Coast LLC for construction services associated with the reconstruct and expand North Apron project in the amount of ten million, two hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars. Item number thirty-four, approval of change order number three with Lugis Construction, Incorporated, for the terminal concourse expansion.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Let me move on for expediency and just kind of move this agenda around a little bit. Under the Airport Commission, item is number 27 through 39.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion for the approval of items number 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 33 through 39.
Second motion.
And probably moved and seconded that we approve item number 27 to participate in visits Savanna's international marketing effort in the amount of $100,000. 28, approval of an advertising campaign for Spirit Airlines with agency of record Rob Mark in the amount of $150,000. Item number 29, approval of a five-year renewed service agreement with N-Fax in the amount of $330,000. Item number 30, approval of a five-year Microsoft Office 365 service subscription agreement with Microsoft Corporation in the amount of $240,000. Item number 31, approval to execute task work order number 12 with MEAT and Hunt for cyber security and AI strategic planning services in the amount of $95,000. Item number 33, approval to execute a contract with EE Reconstruction East Coast LLC for construction services associated with the reconstruct and expand North Apron Project in the amount of $10,269,864. Item number 34, approval of change order number three with Lugis Construction Incorporated for the terminal concourse expansion project in the amount of $294,507. Item number 35, approval to execute a contract with Atlanta Gaslight for natural gas installation for the air cargo facility project in the amount of $47,408. Item number 36, approval to purchase 2025 property liability insurance with Sterling Seacrest Pritchard in the amount of $1,610,738. Item number 37, approval to execute a contract with Rrent General Contracting for construction services associated with the maintenance, equipment, storage, building project in the amount of $495,000. Item number 38, approval to execute a contract with VWS Nielsen Company to reseal the Skylight Structure in Savannah Square and Hilton Head Marketing Place in the amount of $214,000. And item number 39, to purchase one front-deck mower with a cab with, from Jerry Paye Turf and Irrigation in the amount of $74,624. You've heard the motions. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number 32 is approval to execute task work order number 15 with AE Comm for demo air cargo construct Apron Phase 2 project in the amount of $593,475.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to recuse myself for the purpose of business.
Okay. Let the record show that Alderwoman Shabazz has recused herself because of business. Is there a motion on this project?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move for the approval of item number 32.
Second motion.
And probably moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Then moving down, item number 44, petitioner Gary Wiggins on behalf of the Hollins Park Commercial LLC for a master plan amendment for 9.8 acres of property on the Hollins Park Golly Station planned development located at 143, 149, and 155 Shellmark Way to establish a multifamily residential land use in Alderman District 1. This is being requested by the petitioner to be pushed to the August 14th meeting. Or 14th or 12th?
14th.
August 14th meeting. Is there a motion for this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move for the reconsideration of this item to be placed on the August 14th meeting.
Second motion.
Probably moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. All right. Now zoning hearings, item number six, which was continued for the June 26th meeting. Petition of Timothy Kinsey on behalf of Ambigee Properties LLC to amend the future land use map from commercial, regional, to residential, general for the 16.19 acre property located at Zero Fort Argyle Road in Alderman District 5. And related would be item number seven. Petition of Timothy Kinsey on behalf of Ambigee Properties to amend the zoning map from B-C, Community Business, to RMF 220, Residential Multifamily 220 for the 16.9 acre property located at Zero Fort Argyle Road. This was also continued from June 26th. I assume these are sequential?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
These are sequential, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How you doing, Mr. Marrow?
Excellent. Pleasure to see you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Edward Marrow, Director of Development Services from the Metropolitan Planning Commission here. This is our very first zoning petition at Zero Fort Argyle Road. This site is just south of the Harley Davidson dealership that is at I-95 in Fort Argyle. Just to offer you some context, there are two requests here for the purpose of developing some apartments on this parcel. It's about 16 acres with about three acres upland. And in order to accomplish that, the petitioner requires amendment of the future land use map. It's currently indicated for a regional commercial use, and the zoning map is currently also indicated for a business use, and this would change it to multifamily residential. Just to offer you a view here, you can see our future land use map. That red is our regional commercial future land use designation, and you can see the B-C, which is Community Business Zoning District. The uses that the petitioner is requesting fall in line with the RMF 2 zoning district. You can see that this permits single-family detached, attached, two-family homes, townhouses, apartments, all of our different housing types. This is also extremely close to kind of a border of the city and county here, so it's within the city of Savannah, but it does adjoin county property to the north. Just to offer you a view of the plat and the proposed site plan, the parcel again is encumbered by wetlands. And so there's only about 3.8 acres that the petitioner is proposing to develop apartments. They're expecting a yield of up to about 60. And I would like to note for the record, there was discussion with the planning commission that the intent was that the development be consistent with this plan that we see here on the screen. And so that's a typical building footprint. More or less, we would expect, again, to see about 60 apartments here between these buildings proposed. With that, the Metropolitan Planning Commission did recommend approval of both the future land use map amendment and the rezoning amendment to RMF 2-20, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anyone have any comments regarding this item? Okay. Going once, going twice.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move to close the hearing.
Second motion.
And probably moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. This is the companion item of this, is item number 10, which is requested on first and second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the first reading be considered the second, and the ordinance placed upon this passes and passed.
Second motion.
And probably moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. So the companion now that's passed is item number seven, whose companion item is number 11. Wish your pleasure concerning this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move that the first reading be considered the second, and the ordinance placed upon this passes and passed.
Second motion.
And probably moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number eight is petition of Robert McCorkle III on behalf of 9 West 43rd Street for a special use permit to allow alcohol sales in association with a restaurant in a TC1 zoning district of 9 West 43rd Street in Alderman District 2. And item number nine is a petition on behalf of North Point Industrial. Oh, they're different. Okay, I'm sorry.
They are separate.
Yeah, just item, just number, item number eight.
Item number eight, yes, sir. So this is a request for a special use permit to establish accessory alcohol sales in association with a restaurant use. This is a parcel that previously served as a single-family home. It was renovated beginning in about 2019 and 2020. There was a small cafe that was established here in 2021 that also had accessory alcohol sales. There is a new user of this property, and they are requesting also to establish accessory alcohol sales in association with a restaurant. This is the special use permit process. Obviously, this will return to you for consideration of license from ABC. So this is currently indicated on the future land use map as traditional commercial, and the zoning is TC1, so these are both consistent with the future land use map and the zoning map in the area. To offer you a view of the site here, the renovated home that's now a commercial structure, there is adequate parking area. Also, there's some additional area should it be required for expansion of the parking. We can see that this is also a contributing historic structure, so we can expect this to maintain its exterior appearance. Any modifications to this structure would require that this receive a COA from the Historic Preservation Commission. So with that, the Metropolitan Planning Commission did recommend approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. That's a nice house. But this is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything against this special use permit at 9 West 43rd Street? Going once. Going twice. Speak now if ever hold thy peace.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I ask that we close the hearing.
Second motion.
And probably moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes, and wish your pleasure regarding the special use permit.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. After speaking with the neighborhood, we ask that we approve the item as written.
Second.
And probably moved and seconded that we approve the special use permit, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number nine, petitioner Robert McCorkle III on behalf of North Point Industrial for the owner's spare property LLC for zoning map amendment for a planned development for, to permit mixed-use development, residential, single-family apartments, townhouses of 671.53 acres of 302 Bush Road and 420 Books Road, which is now in the city of Savannah, as it was annexed on January 9, 2025. Mr. Marrow?
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So these next two petitions are related to items nine and 12 on your agenda. This is an item that has returned to this board a couple of times for the annexation, for the approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Chatham County, as well as the current property owner and the developer of the property. This specific zoning action is requested for the purpose of applying plan development standards and a map to these properties that have already been annexed and zoned PD. So right now, there is plan development zoning that's associated with this, but there are no development standards and no assignment of uses to specific geographies within the site. So that's what we're gonna do today. You can see the two parcels on your screen currently indicated for plan development for the flume and also plan development on the zoning map. So just to offer you some background, this originally came through for a development of regional impact review in May. And at that time, staff had been working with the petitioner in an attempt to include some commercial use so that we would kind of reduce some vehicular trips. That is no longer a part of this petition. After extensive work with the neighborhood, the petitioner has reduced the scope of the original request. And so today, they are asking you to adopt and apply these new development standards to approximately 682 acres of mixed-use residential development. So that will consist of single-family detached, single-family attached, and apartments. That's what you would see here, up to 1,500 dwelling units, which is consistent with the IGA that this board approved previously. Also, there would be recreational amenities that would be developed in association with this. It's my understanding that those are not public. They are private to the community. Staff is aware of at least seven reported community meetings between the developer and the community. And also, the Neighborhood Association does support the proposal with very specific conditions that you'll see at the end of staff presentation. Again, just to offer you a little bit of zoning history, the IGA stipulated cost sharing with regard to improvements that would be needed for Little Neck Road, as well as other aspects of this development that have already been flushed out by this board. To offer you a view of the revised site plan, you can see here that what was previously indicated for commercial is now R3, which will become a multi, four units per acre R3. That should be residential Pod 3. The only multifamily will occur within the orange area that you see, indicated as MF-1. The R residential zones indicated as R1, R2, and R3 will also have lower-density residential development, and P1 and P2 are the recreational areas that I spoke about. Again, all of this within the 1,500 residential unit maximum density that was discussed previously. With regard to transportation and transit, there was some review of the anticipated number of trips. However, in the ongoing site development process, traffic engineering will require a full traffic study. And so permitting, obviously, is a little bit down the road for these guys. We have an anticipated delivery schedule that you can see between 2026 and 2032. This will probably change slightly, but not to expect greater than 300 units delivered per year in any of these years. You can see that currently, the level of service, based on the 2050s tip daily level of service counts for Little Neck Road is indicated at service level E. And so obviously, the improvements that are going to be required are aimed at bringing that level up so that we are not seeing traffic stagnating as a result of these additional dwelling units. I would like to note for the record, this is within the wetlands and the 100-year floodplain, according to the city of Savannah's new 100-year model. And so with that, the Metropolitan Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request with five conditions. I will allow the petitioner to kind of talk about the details of them, but I would like to mention on the right-hand side, you'll see a letter from the developer, 4M, who has given their written agreement to the neighborhood's conditions. Many of those were brought over on the left-hand side in that list of conditions. There were also some that were included from MPC staff. And finally, there was a last-minute clarification to the nature of vegetation that was to be planted adjoining existing single-family homes here with those multifamily, with the multifamily development that will occur. But Mr. McCorkle will tell you more detail about those final agreements, but I'm happy to answer any questions you all have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Ms. Bieber, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Come on up. Come on up. You have two minutes, because you know the drill. You name your address, and then you have two minutes to make whatever comments you'd like to counsel.
Okay. I'm Carrie Bieber. I'm with West Chatham County Community Watch. It's hard for unincorporated area to accept development going in the backyard. It changes our quality of life quite a bit. We know growth is inevitable. We know we need growth in this county. We've worked very hard to put conditions in place to help protect the Bush Road neighbors, the Little Neck neighbors from, you know, the negative consequences we may have from this. I very respectfully ask that you all approve the conditions, the updated conditions with the red. Those were conditions that were originally worked out a couple months ago. They're pretty important to what we're doing. We've been working very hard on this. Like I said, we appreciate the work from Travis, who was the front man for all of this. He spent a lot of the time answering questions and meeting with us to come to this conclusion. Dr. Shabazz was instrumental in having us get together and work, and we hope that this will be setting example for other communities and other developments that come forwards. Very, a big turn of events, and we appreciate everything, all the work everybody's done. I was told the conditions put into the ordinance will override all of the other documentation, so there was a request to include the conditions on the GDP. I'm hoping that the ordinance will take care of that. We also ask for help with an IGA to be created sooner than later. Little Neck, as he said, is a level E. That's awful. I sent you all pictures of what Little Neck Road looks like outside the PD at this point in time. Hopefully, we can work together to get an additional IGA put in place before and before all the heavy equipment, everything comes in and starts tearing up the roads. We have verbal commitments from both Travis and let me pull out this name real quick, because I forgot, Mr. Blaylock, who's standing over here, to continue working with us during development to make sure that, you know, that we can work with traffic issues, development issues, and things along that line. So we also ask for you all's support with that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your work on this.
Yes, the mayor.
One moment. Mr. McCorkle, you had anything you wanted to?
I just wanted to add to what Ms. Bieber said about engagement. When we were here for the annexation before, back in January, Alderwoman Shabazz brought me up to the front of the room and instructed me to make sure that we engage the community in our work on this master plan for this project. She, I think, kind of warned me not to come back and explain why we had not. And so I just wanted to commend both my client and the various neighborhood associations and the Agueche Riverkeeper and everybody else we dealt with. As was mentioned by staff, over the last six months, we've had more than seven, I think, in-person meetings plus numerous phone calls and texts and emails. The original staff report for this from the MPC, at MPC, had three conditions attached. What's before y'all today is five. I just want to point out that we added the other two to ourselves at the request of the neighborhood, because we've stood with them in this process of making a project that we think is gonna work for everybody and protect everybody. And then today, again, these words that are before you in red, we presented to the city once we saw the staff report this week at the request of the neighbors, and we again stand with the neighbors and support the conditions as revised, and we would just ask for your approval. And we're really looking forward to bringing this property brought into the city and adding 1,500 residential units into the city and fight the housing needs that we have, and looking forward to getting this done in the next few years.
Thank you. Any other comments? Going once. Going twice. Speak now if ever hold your peace.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I ask that we close the hearing, sir.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Alderwoman Shabazz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I would like to thank you and your staff for, for working really close with me and then our outreach with engaging the developer, with our Mr. Attorney McCorkle, and just, just hopefully developing a model for the continuous expansion that is so much needed to help with decreasing our negative inventory of housing here in the city of Savannah. of housing here in the City of Savannah. So, thank you so much. I also want to thank you for working really hard and closely with Chatham County as we are developing the improvements of Bush Road and making sure that, as Mrs. Bieber was talking about, of the roadways and having the IGA, including all the things that we've been working with. So, I just want to thank you again for working really, really close with Chatham County to make things happen. Mr. Attorney McCorkle and developer, I knew, I know that you all went out just on a ledge with all of this, but I appreciate, I appreciate, and this is really going to send out a message, resounding message, to those who want to develop in our city, is that we must continue to have our public engaged with what we're doing in our city.
Amen.
So, with, with the work that you all did in the last past six months, I take my hat off to all of you. Thank you all so, so, so much for working hard with the community. And the last thing, with the special conditions from the NPC, thank you all so much for just making that stretch, you know, with these. And if you don't know, I'll let you know. When conditions like these are made, and they are not originally in budgets of folks who are developing, these things are not just words, they are also money. So, I just want to thank you all so much for just the additional funds that will be needed for these conditions to make our community and our residents very, 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 very happy. So, with that being said, again, I thank you, Mrs. Bieber. Don't stop. Mrs. Wilson, don't stop, because I need you. So, thank you all so, so much for always having your hands on the plow. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McCorkle, how many units, total units, are being added in this project? I think I counted 24s we were going through.
It cannot be more than 1,500. The, the intergovernmental agreement that y'all adopted in November limited the total density on the 680 acres to 1,500 units. This isn't a site plan, so we don't know exactly how many it's going to be, but it will be less than 1,500 total, which is about 2.2 units per gross acre. So, over a large piece of property like this, it's pretty low-density.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion if this is in place.
Yes.
I move that the first reading be considered the second, and the ordinance placed upon its passage and pass.
Second. And probably move the second, that the first reading be considered the second, and so it is placed upon its passage and pass. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all so much.
First readings of 13 and 14 have already talked about that, under our rules, it wasn't advertised as a public hearing, so this is just for publication purposes. However, August 14th, we will take it up. There are several ways that you can address counsel. You could do it in person on the 14th. You could do it by sending a message to the clerk and counsel, and he sends us all of those, those comments. And so, we encourage you to do so. I will just say this, that the first amendment's right to peaceably assemble is one of the bedrock foundational freedoms that we have as Americans. Now, whether you love horses or you don't, wherever you are on this, the great part about being in America is that you have the right to an opinion. And you have a right to express that opinion. Even if people don't agree with you, you still have the right to be able to do that. You have the right to gather. You have the right to share ideas. You have the right to express your views. You have the right to advocate for change or no change. I just cautioned as mayor of this city that the right to peaceably assemble, the word, operative word here is peaceably. And we can disagree and still be neighbors. We could disagree and still be friends. I have friends I disagree with all the time, but I love them, but I disagree with them on a variety of things. So, I just ask, in the ensuing days and weeks as this issue continues to play out, and I understand there's a lot of emotion behind it, let's just keep it cute, and let's just keep it, you know, keep it cool, and everybody just be cool. And, you know, if you don't agree, then you just don't agree, and just leave it at that. And then, let the legislative process for counsel take place as it does. So, just thank you all for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes, sir.
A brief comment, in the spirit of trying to maintain the focus of this issue, because I've got something to say about it now that I've dried out, and, but just want to, because what will happen, I anticipate what will happen, is that in cases like these, where there's an enormous amount of attention, we will try to move the goalposts to a person. We will try to move them to a scapegoat. We will, we will analyze and split hairs over the details. The most important thing to, to remember is that we're all Savanians, and the people that are passionate about this issue, they're passionate because it's the values that they hold. They are not for or against anybody else. It's what they believe in. We all have a right to express ourselves peacefully. It's the bedrock of our democracy. And no matter what happens in the ensuing month, as this is debated, my most important wish is that we keep it to the policy. That's our charge, to address the heat, the number that's in this ordinance, the safety and welfare of animals, the operators that serve, and the conditions that the city has been charged with to address. We have a duty to draft these regulations and evaluate them all the time. It is an affront to the process to say that we should focus on other things. There are better things that we could be doing. I agree, there are better things that we could be doing, and we have evaluated this for years, but we've still never had a public hearing. So, I wish for all of us to continue to express our opinions, to express our voices, and acknowledge that we are still one city. We are one community. We hold these values dearly, and let's debate the policy at hand. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Fortunately, we have an experienced counsel. We've been, we've been at this for a minute. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make a public comment, that what Alderman Palumbo experienced while he was attending the protest is unacceptable. And I think all of us feel the same way about that. And Nick, I'm sorry that happened to you, and he was very graceful in his response, because if it was someone else, it may not have, it would have been a different story. And we don't want that. And you went viral, but I know that's not the way you would have wanted, wanted to go viral, but, so, I'm sorry you had to go through that, but I just needed to address that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And yes, I would like to go unviral, please.
All right. Thank you. Under second readings, ordinances, item number 15, petition to annex 4.62 acres located at 4119 Agueche Road from Chatham County to the City of Savannah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion for approval for the item, for the agenda item as it's written.
Second.
Probably move the second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 16, petition of Harold B. Yellen on behalf of Dennis Hoffman for the owner of 17 South Mini Stores to amend the future land use map of a 4.62-acre property at 4119 Agueche Road from industry light to commercial suburban. Annex petition of companies just request.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt the agenda item as written.
Second.
And probably move the second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 17, petition of Harold B. Yellen on behalf of Dennis Hoffman for the owner of 17 South Mini Stores to amend the zoning map of a 4.62-acre property at 4119 Agueche Road from planned business, Chatham County, to business and business to BC Community Business. And this is also another annex, annexation petition.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt the agenda item as written.
Probably move the second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, something we could all agree on. The City of Savannah is adopting the rollback rate and reducing the millage rate for the City of Savannah. I want to thank City Manager Melder, Ma McCarney, your boy did good on this one, and, and the budget team for the work, and this, this council for keeping the main thing the main thing. And so, this is approval to amend the 2025 revenue ordinance to adopt the rollback millage rate of 11.749 mils as the final millage rate of 2025.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I know you're saying it real quietly. I'm just going to say, this is rolling back. This is an item for rolling back. Now, make the motion.
No, you make the motion.
I want to say that a little bit louder.
Make a motion, please.
Yes, I move, I move that we...
Second.
I know.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
I had to say it three or four more times.
You almost messed it up.
Always talking about it.
Well, and I need to say this, because people really get it mixed up.
Yes.
There are several ingredients that goes into your tax bill. The city, the county, the school board, the transit district. The school board's is way more than ours, Mr. Moss.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it is. And, and of course, we have a hot property market where valuation is growing. So, this is some relief that we can provide, but again, we don't control what your total tax bill is.
That's right.
We get blamed for everybody's taxes, and this, you know, we, my tax, well, I mean, your property is more valuable. So, thank you all for that. And then, this is a motion to amend Article R and Article U of the 2025 revenue ordinance.
Move for approval.
Second.
Probably move the second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Under your purchasing items, items number 20 through 26.
22.
Mr. Mayor, pulling 22.
Pull 20.
20 and 22. Mr. Mayor, if there are no other items for pullout, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of items number 21, 23, 24, and 25, 26.
Second.
Probably move the second, that we approve item number 21, which authorizes City Manager to execute a contract with Garni Companies Incorporated to perform pre-construction services related to the expansion and upgrade of the industrial domestic water treatment facility. Item number 23, authorize City Manager to execute a contract modification number two for Crushstone with Martin Mariella Materials in an amount not to exceed $140,000. Item number 24.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I said 22, and it should have been 21.
Okay. Well, then, I need a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on correction to approve item number 20 and not 21. Thank you.
Second.
Second motion.
No, it's, the motion should be for items number 20, 21, to approve items number 22 through 26.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
Second.
So, we're clear where we are, right?
Yes.
All right. So, going back, so it's now items number 22 through 26. 22, authorize City Manager to execute a contract for equity-driven public engagement services for the Savannah Civic Center with Blue Knowledge LLC Local in the amount not to exceed $70,000. Item number 23, authorize City Manager to execute a contract modification number two for Crushstone with Martin Mariella Materials in the amount not to exceed $140,000. Item number 24, authorize City Manager to execute a contract for the governance and advisory services with McLean and Company in the amount of $58,000. Item number 25, authorize City Manager to execute a contract for renovations for the WW Law Community Center from FH Passion in the amount not to exceed $450,000. Item number 26, authorize City Manager to execute a contract for new lift station in Forest Main with BRW Construction Group in the amount of $14,553,454. You've heard the motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 20, authorize City Manager to execute a contract with the Chatham-Savannah Authority for the homeless for the provision of street outreach and transportation services for people experiencing homelessness in the amount not to exceed $273,715. Alderwoman Wilder-Bryant.
Mr. Mayor?
And this was continued from the June 26 meeting.
I think we did a lot of talking about this one, and the reason why I had some trepidation about it. And I read the summary, and nothing's changed. The whole idea for passing it for two weeks was to try to get an adjustment for the timeframe. And so, while I don't want to belingue this, right, but I'm still, when we ask for something for two weeks, the whole idea is to get some conversation about it or to change something. And so, the summary is still the same thing. And the main thing that I asked and requested is, we're hiring four people to work 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and this is the street. And so, what's going on on Sunday? And that's the problem that I had. And the hours are still banking hours, and most of the people who have problems have them after 11 o'clock. And so, we need to have some conversation about this, but in light of not trying to politicize this right here, we, we talked about all the things that was going to happen to our ruthless people. And so, we're giving a quarter of a million dollars to try to help these ruthless people with bankers' hours, and that is bankers' hours. And so, however they vote for this right here, I want to make it be known that there's nothing that you can do from 9:00 to 10:00 that negates what needs to be done from 11:00 until 6:00 o'clock in the morning. And so, we keep saying, passing these things for two weeks, and I'm very disappointed in this, to come back two weeks later and have had no conversation. Ms. Gwen did reach out for me, but this is something that I thought that your staff was going to come back, because I don't make a decision on this. But, but to say that the same thing two weeks later and nothing's changed is really disappointing.
I thought, Mr. Manager, that you said it would require a modification or another contract. Was that what it was? I thought that's what we meant.
So, we completely understand. Let me ask you. We completely understand. I was not able to negotiate any new rates or have any confidence that we could expand the hours any further than this contract does. This contract does significantly expand our outreach service hours from what they are currently, and we'll continue to work to close those gaps. But it will require additional funding, and it will, it will require another contract modification.
Excuse me, sir. I don't understand that additional funding. Why can't they just change the hours? Okay, so, we had this whole thing about horses and the heat, and so, aren't these ruthless people just as important as horses and animals, you know?
Yes, ma'am, they are.
And so, to sit here and hear people say how important it is to change the weather, I'm more concerned about all of that, but specifically, people who are outside and y'all want to arrest, and they're going to be arrested during those hours, because I did law enforcement. They're going to take that property and throw it in the trash, because nobody's going to go through that property. Nobody's told me yet how we're going to process these people's property, because two people are going to have to inventory this property. When they're taken to the jail, and it has to be stored somewhere in the heat where people are working, and so, to keep saying that we have to negotiate a contract, we don't have to negotiate, sir, the time. It's eight hours, whatever they do.
We did provide, we looked into this issue very thoroughly for two weeks. And in the Tuesday night memo, we have almost a page of the feasibility of extending operating hours between 9:00 p.m., including Sundays. I completely agree with your value, Alderwoman, about the need for expanded homeless outreach services. This council has been responsible for creating a system to better serve people. There was no homeless outreach services before this council. There is now. The issue that we're finding with the binding constraint here is that even if we were to expand the outreach services under this contract, which would cost an additional $60,000, which is not, which is not insurmountable. Other partner agencies are not open, and so, those other resources would not be available. And the, the product that we would be able to connect someone with during those hours would be a extremely limited number of emergency shelter beds for agencies and operators that were able to work with during those late-night hours. It's absolutely where we have to get to in a system. And I think that's exactly why we have the inter-agency council on homelessness working to close those gaps. Unfortunately, this isn't just about a one provider being able to absorb additional hours or work on a Sunday versus a Saturday. This is about having a complement of different types of providers and resources that are going to be available in those hours as well, so that homeless outreach services have a resource to connect people to during those hours. I think that's really the constraint. And so, when we were able to kind of raise and increase the hours for all of our resources, that was what those RFPs that we released in March, and with the two contracts, the one that you passed two weeks ago for Union Mission, and this one for the Homeless Authority, are trying to... are trying to achieve. I can't agree with you more about the need here and the direction that we need to go. And it's only because of those binding constraints that we're not able to extend that further, but hopefully very shortly, we'll have the entire system operating at a level where we'll be able to continue to push the.
I just have one other question. And so why would we give them an additional $60,000 and they not going to be paired with people who are open? That makes no sense to me, Mr. Melder.
Well, that's why we're not, that's why we wouldn't, that's why I'm not recommending that we spend additional $60,000 for those additional hours where there aren't the collaborative partner agencies and resources available during those time periods. I think that would not be, we just wouldn't have the type of system that we need during those hours.
I'm not suggesting that you give them an additional $60,000. I'm suggesting that they do what they're supposed to do, what their charge is during those hours. And if they don't, I'm requesting not quarterly, we need to get a return on our investment. I don't think that we're getting a return on our investments, because you're saying that other nonprofits aren't open at that time. We need to do something about that. If y'all are going to make these timely things that we're going to do to, that's going to change their quality of life, then we need to do better than what we're doing, Mr. Melder. And so we need to come up with something that's going to change the quality of the life during that timeframe that we don't have any service. And on Sunday, so what's going on with Sunday? What is the question about Sunday?
Yes, ma'am.
That you don't have the time? Because listen, I worked in law enforcement, and I did some things where the Department of Family and Children's Services, and I'm telling you, it's not going to be a big thing to change one of those days when they do have nonprofits working to a Sunday. We need coverage from this homeless authority on Sunday. To not have anything on Sunday is just very distasteful. It's very distasteful.
Let me add, so what day do you suggest that we move from the week and put on Sunday?
Well, that would depend on what, they have the numbers of when they need the most, right? They should be able to determine that.
I think that's what the challenge he's saying.
I think the issue too is Sunday, and I'd like to have the assistant city manager, who's been working on this, talk to this issue as well, but it's that the resources across the system on Sunday is very limited, not because of one provider, but because of many providers. And I think that's a direction where we have to incentivize and expand to 24 hours, seven days a week, but we're just not there yet. I'd like to have Taffany speak a little bit more about the issue.
Okay. The contract that we're recommending for approval is for six days, and this is the one that you saw and that you see back in front of you, is for six days a week till 9:00 p.m. That's an expansion above the contract that we had previously approved last year. We had human services to reach out to the Homeless Authority during this period, the last two weeks, as well as Union Mission, because we know that the street outreach contract that the Homeless Authority has, they need somewhere to take people to be received. Union Mission, as well as the Homeless Authority, have both said that they could extend to do Sundays. That would be picking up seven days a week until 9:00 p.m. The cost of that in terms of additional staffing for both of them to be able to have case managers in place and also folks that will be doing the actual street outreach comes to a total, and if you're looking for this, it'll be in your Tuesday night memo, you see a memo in there, would be an additional $100,693 to pick up the staff and the resources that they would need. But it would get us to seven days a week, where you're talking about Sunday, and then nine o'clock. The area that we would have to work towards is, A, that would be an unbudgeted cost, so that's why it's not added into the contract. We would have to identify another $100,000, $101,000 should be able to pick up Sunday. But yes, when you were asking us to talk with them, to find out if they could, what would be their capacity, they have both said yes, they could and would look forward to a contract modification in order to be able to pick up that if we're able to identify the funds. So Sunday is possible.
Right, thank you for that. But I just wanted to remind people that I was in agreement that we have to do something of what's going on downtown. And so because of people traveling, that Sunday vacation and stuff, there are going to be more arrests on Sunday if we don't hurry up and do something, because we're saying that we don't want them downtown, and we don't want them in public spaces. And Sunday and Saturday, the weekend, is where we do most of our arrests, and I know that from hands-on experience, when we did these arrests, and I booked people in at the Chatham County Sheriff's Department as a sergeant. And so most of those arrests is going to happen on the weekend. And so that's why I'm adamant about us doing something on the weekend, Sunday especially, because it's a lot of times when people are traveling and they're complaining, and again, if we're going to complain about it, we need to do something and we need to find that money. Thank you for your time.
But this is further than we were.
Yeah, I agree.
So.
I agree.
So.
But here we are.
Well, I mean, but I think beyond that, it was this council that made the monumental steps forward.
Yeah.
In a year, we've already expanded our services. I think if we keep the trajectory going, understanding where our gaps in services are, then ultimately, I would love to have the service 24 hours a day, every day. I think we have to get there incrementally. I understand, I do appreciate your passion, Alderwoman Bryant, and I agree with you, but I think that we can't always get there. We have to build bridges to get to the next step.
Yes, sir, I agree.
So I think the city manager and assistant city manager, hear you, sorry, ma'am, assistant city manager, trial by fire.
Welcome to our world.
Yes, sorry, you know, you had to get in the middle of this, but that's another gray hair. But, you know, I think it's definitely a step in the right direction, and I think, city manager, you've heard, you know, we want folks taken care of all the time.
Yes, sir.
And we can get there.
So, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Chatham-Savannah Authority for the Homeless for the provision of street outreach and transportation services for people experiencing homelessness.
Second. And probably move the seconded, Alderwoman Bell.
I'm just agreeing with what you said. It's a step in the right direction, and this is as the mayor and as the city manager stated further than we have, man, this council should be proud. It's an incremental process. Also, don't forget that inner-city night shelter, the only wet shelter in town, is expanding for an additional 40 beds. So, you know, we're not there yet, but we're definitely making progress as well as in terms of providing services for our homeless population.
Yeah.
Thank you. Probably move the second in all in favor, the case by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, more to come. Item number 21, authorize city manager to execute a contract with Garni Companies Incorporated to perform pre-construction services related to the expansion and upgrade of the industrial domestic water treatment facility in the amount not to exceed $700,000. This was continued from the June 26, 2025 City Council meeting. Alderwoman Lanier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Melder, again, we postponed this item to receive some more information. I spent quite a bit of time, a deep dive, looking at the information that was presented to us at the last meeting. We're talking about spending $146 million in the first district on this IND plant for the west side of Savannah. And I spent that considerable time, because we ended up looking at two companies, two proposers, two bidders, and I sent quite a bit of information to your office, and I've not seen the answers to the questions that I sent and spent hours working on that and brought in some very smart people. I don't have a staff, but I had to build one to work on this when it's necessary. We pulled some really smart people together to look at this, and we tried to put together, we looked at the company's history based on what we could find in the public. We didn't get the information on the interview that I requested. And yes, both of these companies met the minimal qualification, and they met the C-Mar qualification, but some of them exceeded the C-Mar. But there's some red flags. We put together a qualifications comparison analysis, a spreadsheet, and had it been close, we probably would have just shut down our operation. But it appears that one of the companies far exceeded, as far as experience and the different jobs they had under their belt and the amount of the billions of dollar jobs that, and that's not the one being recommended. So we may have, we are recommending, because this company does meet the minimum, but the other companies seem to, based on not having all of the information that I requested, but the information that we could discover, seems like the one who was not recommended far exceeded head over heels, the organization that was, and that's when the couple of people in the room from the university and others, just like, what? How did this happen? I said, well, we don't have all the information that I requested from staff to enter into this spreadsheet, this analysis. And if I released the analysis thus far, I think folks, after verifying it, would be quite surprised that this particular company that far exceeded the one that we are recommending, and we recommended the lesser. And so I'll share that information with your office, but you all have not provided me. I don't know if you didn't have enough time. We just had the two weeks. I know our next meeting is in a month, but I, did I miss something? Did you all send me something that I did not?
Yes, ma'am, there was an email from the city attorney regarding our ability to send responses.
Help. Let me before the city attorney, because as I understood it, we just be the school board, just take it down. We'll just be the school board. We'll just be the school board, and we're going to.
This is representative of the last meeting.
Let's take it down. Let's take it down. Keep it down, we're good. Y'all know who we are, right? Now, the direction the council was that if you had questions, they needed to be submitted by closing business, which is 5:00 p.m. on July the 1st. When I inquired, I believe I was the only one to ask questions by 5:00 p.m. July the 1st. And then I saw the attorney send a letter, so that put me in the mind that other questions might have been rendered, but I think we were all clear, and we specified that 5:00 p.m. was the time, and I understood I was the only person. So, Mr. Attorney, would you like to give some clarification?
So, yes, sir. So, Alderwoman, I sent an email, and I can't, I apologize, it may have been earlier this week, I think it was late last week, because the responses were supposed to go out, I believe, Thursday, July 3rd. Okay? And when I reviewed the questions and the responses to that, I had concerns about the disclosure. We have a procurement process that's based upon, I mean, state law, best practices, and keeping that procurement process independent and defensible. And some of the questions got too far into the guts of what that procurement process involves, which is not permissible to disclose before this vote is taken, before this hearing occurs. Now, the city manager has the vast majority of the responses to the questions that y'all have asked, and he can go over with that information in this public setting like that. But I had concerns about the legality of the disclosure of much of the information that was requested.
I get it. That's interesting, because I understand, because a lot of the things we do now, when I was a public administrator, they were illegal.
Yes.
And we were doing all kinds of things, but these things used to be illegal. But in this case, so we cannot disclose it, and we are past this, so if I come back and share the information that my team discovered, and there's so much discrepancy, then what is the recourse?
I think after the hearing, after the vote, that is more an appropriate time to disclose the information that was given. It's just that you want to keep this information in a bubble, so that forces that should not be affecting the vote and your ultimate decision don't have an opportunity to unreasonably affect your vote. And so we want to give you the information in a public setting, like a full disclosure, go over it here, ask questions now, the city manager can answer those questions now, but in written format, I thought that I had problems with our ultimate disclosure.
Okay, I understand that. And so again, my question is, after this vote, and the information, the discovery is disclosed, and Ray Charles can see that we clearly did not choose the most qualified firm, then what is the recourse?
Well, so, a couple of things. One, if there are two bidders here, okay, if the group that did not, is not selected, has recourse, they have won a formal option to appeal the decision within the city of Savannah, okay? We have a process within the process about appealing and challenging what happened. And if they're not satisfied with that appeal process, which I don't understand that they have taken, they can always file a lawsuit in Superior Court, saying, hey, the city council did the wrong thing for these wrong reasons, and then I would defend it in court.
And that's another point, because it makes us complicit with whatever's happening, but I think I'd like to send notice out to our process of procedures, because I had to put back on my certified analyst hat and dive into this, and I was blown by how much of a discrepancy there was. So I understand what you're saying, and the actual legal procedure that we are now taking, so I just needed to say this in public, because once the vote is taken, then I guess I'll be in a position to share this information with management.
I'd be happy to talk with you about that.
Thank you.
Let me tell you one thing. I'm not going to jail, and I'm not going to hell. The council manager formal government protects city council members, because it creates a buffer between the decision makers and the process of formulating a recommendation. That is there on purpose. That is regulated, it protects us. There is a period in between the time that the RFP is released and answered, a blackout period in which we're not to communicate. Subs, primes, they know that, they sign disclosure, that they're not supposed to do that. And so all I'm saying to all of us is, we accept the recommendation or we don't. But I would just caution council, not only on the legal side, but on the ethical side, just to make sure that we're allowing our roles to do what they do. It should never become fuzzy. And so, Mr. Attorney, I mean, when you sent that memo, I knew, and I was like, I hope it wasn't me, because I had done nothing wrong. But that is when people get into trouble, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's what I've been seeing from day one on this council, that if we know better, we need to do better. Just because we've always done something a certain way, that doesn't mean it's right. And I don't want to be a part of wrongdoing, knowing it's wrong. I often talk about the culture, the culture, and we're doing a whole new strategic plan in hopes of changing the culture, and we're continuing to do certain things. And so I have the ability to do some research and look into things, especially when the red flags go off, and that's what I did. So I understand what you're saying, we are taking this vote, and then I'll get with management on the rest, so thank you.
And I absolutely agree with you, which is why there are steps after this. And I would suspect, once the vote is taken, that information, the process is considered over, then you release whatever information will be released, and then we go from there, right? Okay.
I think it's important to appreciate the expertise that everybody on council brings to these issues, and I think that makes us better for it. For every procurement that we do, we have to follow federal, state, and local procurement law, and which we did in this case. There was a technical review panel of experts, and those experts had to judge the proposals, the proposals that were submitted, not by any other research about any of the respondents, but by the proposals themselves, and they had to be scored in accordance with the RFP, which was reviewed and approved by the state, because we're using state money for this procurement. So I want to say that from a city management perspective, it's the process that we are adhering to, and the result of that process is the recommendation, but it's the. But it's the process that we're making sure is compliant with all federal, state, and local procurement laws, and that we are evaluating those proposals based on the RFP and based on those laws.
You had them put down.
What did your recommendation, sir?
My recommendation is to approve the contractors recommended.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for the agenda item to be approved as written.
Second.
Probably moved in second, in all the favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose.
Oppose.
Motion passes. That will be seven one. Thank you very much. And Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney, make those information available to whoever wants it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Now, we move on to items number forty and forty-one. Item number forty is approval of a water sewer agreement with Starland Property Company LLC for Starland Village, development consisting of event space, office space, retail space, restaurant space, and residential units.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to speak on forty-one. But I'll make a motion for forty.
Okay, probably moved in seconded, that we approve item number forty, in all the favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. Item number forty-one, approval of intergovernmental agreement with Chatham County for the use and distribution of special purpose local options, sales tax proceeds, and capital outlay projects commencing October 1, 2026. I will just tell you this, it's not perfect, but we can live with it.
Second. So move, sir.
Second.
Probably moved in seconded, yes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, can we talk about that a little bit?
Yes.
The agenda item is not the actual contract that you're now voting to approve. There has been an updated version of that contract, provided all members of council, and I provided copies to the media earlier today. It's in front of you, extra copies for anybody in the gallery that needs a copy, but I want to make sure that we're clear about what you're voting to approve.
What are the changes?
So, on, it's really, you want to go?
So, substantively, that's not different at all. The paragraph that was published in the agenda on the Exhibit A, which is how the proceeds are going to be divided between the municipalities and the county itself, Paragraph Two of Page One of that exhibit talked about how revenues would be dispersed for collections over $700 million. And it basically laid out that it would be distributed per, a pro-rata share of population relative to the entire county for every municipality in Chatham County. Currently, according to the 2020 census, Savannah has 50.2% of the population, therefore we would receive 50.2% of the allocation over $700 million. The updated IGA says essentially the same thing. There is some language clarification, however, about when the 2030 census would be available to base that number versus the 2020 census, as this IGA would likely overlap the release of the 2030 census, and could change those population pro-rata shares of the municipality. That was the subject of a meeting this morning between the chairman of the county and managers that was held at the airport today. We finalized those agreements. It does not change the Tier One project list, where the City of Savannah would have $68 million. Does not change the second tier of allocations, which would fund City of Savannah at $200 million, which is in line with the project list that this council gave approval for two weeks ago. But it does favor the City of Savannah now for any proceeds over $700 million, in accordance with state law.
Okay.
So those are the changes.
Probably moved in seconded, all the, or any under readiness. Think city manager was clear.
Yes.
All the favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. Item number forty-two is something we've talked about before, authorize city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Roger, with Roger and them.
Mr. Mayor.
And Chatham County for the city use of the board-owned Jenkins pool. They are, all of our pools are operating, and the Jenkins pool is in relatively good shape, and so we're trying to expand access. So this is the agreement that you all asked staff for.
Mr. Mayor, Jenkins is in the third district.
Oh, no, go ahead.
We have a pool that's in the second district, WW Law, that we share, and I remember Roger, our friend, and that's why we're here, saying that he, in the Board of Education, was not in the pool business. He revisited, I'm proud to say. And so, for that information purposes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make sure that we acknowledge that when we make these statements as public officials, it's all right to come back and change it, whatever it is. And so, Roger got a lot of heat from that NAACP meeting about the pool. I'm so glad that we have an additional pool, so that makes six, and that covers the entire city. And so, I'm just wanting to move that motion. I was looking for...
I don't know why he got heat. I mean, I understood clearly what he was saying.
We understood what he was saying, but he did.
You know, because people want to take what they, take a sentence out of context and then blow it up into something else, you know? That's how life is, brother.
And so, I'm grateful, Roger Dodger.
Probably moved in seconded, all the favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. This motion passes.
Thank you.
Sorry, can I give a clarification on that? This is great. I just want to let people know, we're still waiting for the Health Department to...
Right.
...the Jenkins pool, and we're working out exactly the hours of operation there as it abuts a high school. So, just be patient as...
Staff knows, because we walk through every single one of them, they get the same effect. And someone like me who can't swim, I can't drown in a splash pad.
I can't swim in a splash pad.
I can't drown in a splash pad.
With a chalk holdin' breath and soap.
And I don't get chlorine all over me, so.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to thank...
I think she is. Nobody drowned.
Oh. Now, let me, let me...
Just wanted to thank our partnership with our school system, and I walked down memory lane with a brief story. Many, many years ago, in a galaxy far, far away, when I was doing my student teaching at HBJ Warriors, I had the most treacherous assignment known to the SEC PSS. As a ninth grade teacher, a bunch of young men with a classroom with a picture window that overlooked that very pool. So, it comes full circle, we will keep it in good hands, and yes, that's what posters are made for, you know, to be able to block that view. So, I know, since then, of course, now it's a beautiful school. Go Warriors, and thank you so much for the partnership with the school system.
Just wanted to thank...
Thank you, Alderman Wilder-Bryan.
I wanted to thank Taffany, that was her last official job in recreation, her and the manager on the back wall. Thank you so much.
Nick Roberts.
Nick Roberts.
Nick Roberts. From the Department of Fund, who's ready for us to go.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to commend our assistant city manager, city manager, and Mr. Roberts for the lifeguards. When we did the opening day for the 100 Days of Summer, there were so many lifeguards, and some were being trained as lifeguards. So, do we have enough lifeguards? The question is, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item number forty-three, settlement number one.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city attorney's office to settle a claim of A. Middleton for $65,000.
Thank you. And probably moved in seconded, that we moved authorize the city attorney's office to settle a claim of Ajna, Ahajna, excuse me, for mispronouncing it, Middleton, for $65,000. All the favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. This ends our formal agenda. Keep Alderman, Villa Blakely, her family, and your thoughts and prayers as well. Also, this starts a brief hiatus of Team Savannah. Our next meeting is not until August the 14th. So I hope, Mr. Manager and team, you all find you time in the midst of this. It's a great opportunity. We'll be back at City Hall then, right? Huh? We're going back to City Hall then, right? We hope so. Stay tuned. But we're hoping this is a time to recharge or refuel for the work and the pace by which we move ahead. Alderman Bell.
I was asking everybody to pray for Alicia's...
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Nick first.
Yes, sir.
Yes, although I believe this will be our last meeting, but, you know, it remains. But I did have a small gift and a token of our gratitude that I think President Roger Moss would appreciate. He has been extraordinarily generous to host us here in this space, and let me tell you, it's been really interesting to debate with my colleagues while there is a painted dancing bear and some books overlooking. So, it is small but mighty, it is not luxurious, and it is not wrapped, but I figured that you might be able to use it. I brought you some sage, so that you may cleanse this space after we are complete. So, I'll have it, hold it for you. Thank you.
We can burn that now, so. I will tell you, City Hall is coming along. It's still an active construction space, and will be even after we get back into the space, but it is moving along, and you're seeing life in there, and really, it is just a beautiful space. President Moss, you, Superintendent Watts, and the entire team, thank you all for allowing us the use of the space and your technology and your team. And if you ever need City Hall, we got you.
Oh, we'll ask.
We got you, yeah, we got you. Anything else? Alderman Leggett.
That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again, Mr. Manager, and again, thank you to your mom for coming again to Savannah and hanging out in the second district. You know that's where it happens at. So, again, Mr. Mayor, thank you guys for allowing me to bring Trevor Birmingham, one of our young people. He's been shadowing me with, at the hospital as well as, he's going to be one of our young firefighters. And we just want to let him know how proud we was of him. For the community, we wanted to lift up the name of Bishop Jermaine Oliver. His funeral is going to be on tomorrow at 11:00 AM. Also, Ms. Henrietta Kane, of 101 years old, her funeral is on Saturday at 2:00 PM at Adams Chapel. But before all of that, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to put my words and loving arms around our first responders and everybody that responded on last week, that they showed up, they showed out, and they showed what they were about, all the training was about, and they brought back some confidence in our public, that our public officials, as well as our first responders, did exactly what they were supposed to do. Everybody showed up. Our police chief was there, our city staff was there, and we showed exactly what we trained for. And to the life of Ms. Elistine Tina Smith, we lifted her up, her funeral is going to be on Saturday. And to her family, we offer our love and respect to. And I stand behind what the mayor definitely said in our press conferences, you know, we don't run away from things, we run to it, but as we run to it, we are smart about how we react to it. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your leadership.
Yes.
Thank you. Police chief, thank you for your leadership, and our fire department, and our sheriff, and city manager was out there, and to all the partners that fed us, because you know we was out there hot and brown. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Wilder-Bryan.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to offer condolences to the family of Barbara Gore, Beach Class of 58, the Golden Girls of Sandfly, Savannah, and the amazing, her friends at the park, the Golden Aces. Then I want to announce that Rock the Block is starting again. I would appreciate that. Mr. Pruvet and Carlos Bates, it starts up the 15th to the 17th, and the 22nd to the 24th at the First Assembly Church of God at 1901 Penn Avenue, where Janice Weaver is the minister there. And then we want to congratulate my warrior friend, he's a newly elected board chairman of the Chatham Area Transit Department, Board Chair Dietrich Leggett. How are you doing for a vacation?
Alderman Leggett announced the funeral of Tina Smith. It's on Saturday, July 12th, at 11 o'clock at Christ Memorial Baptist Church. That's at 1023 Dutch Town Road.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to also give the additional information in reference to my family, my husband, and our family's first cousin, Bishop Jermaine Pancho Oliver. It will be held on Saturday, July 12th, at 11 o'clock PM at St. Paul Seamy Church on Bonnet Street. I'd also like to take this point of personal privilege to thank each and every one, especially our mayor and his leadership, and all of Team Savannah, and everyone who just texted us and reached out to us, prayed for us, who called and everything during the time of our bereavement and our family with our second oldest brother. His name was Theodore Morris, that we funeralized about a week and a half ago. So, we just, our family want to thank everyone during that time, just big hugs, all of you.
Arche.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
And, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, yes. Good news first, the Fairwood reunion this weekend, in the usual place, off of Bay Street. I would like to send out condolences to the White family in West Savannah, Ms. Geneva White, as she's been a friend and a mentor since childhood, a church member, community, active community member. Keep them in your prayers. And also, please keep Judge Tammy Stokes in your prayers, for the loss of her husband on today.
Yeah, we were with her this morning. Keep her in your prayers.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Please come out Saturday, 11:00 AM at the Savannah Technical College Eckenberg Theater for Speak Out Savannah, a public engagement about the FY 2026 budget formulation. Also, want to say that we have a fire station open house at Fire Station Two, Five Skyline Drive. So, if you'd like to see what fire service is all about, go to the open house.
Have some good hot dogs.
At Fire Station Number Two, but hope to see everyone at our public budget engagement forum Saturday at 11:00 at Savannah Tech.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
We do have a street naming tomorrow at 9:00 AM in Tremont Park as well, so, Ms. Coco?
That's her grandmother.
Oh, really? Come on, come and hug your boy. Come on, I want to just see you. Oh, he did well today. Come on up.
Bear.
I know.
Bear.
Oh, he going his, I just love that kind of stuff. See?
Oh. I gotta capture that.
Look, we stay in the germ.